Buddy, welcome to the world.
I mean, I got, I haven't registered yet. I can't wait for that.
No. All right, what's happening?
I'm reading quote.
Yeah.
Ah.
I'm in the eyes every day.
She's ready. She could tell you.
How well?
Friends were almost there.
I leased it.
Oh, nice.
Does it still go on the cost?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, 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 I know. I mean, I know it's still gonna be painful.
But hey, man.
Well, my last car was over fifty and I only paid like seventeen hundred, I think, the first year.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it went to like twelve and then to like seven. So that was good.
Yeah, I just registered Heather's car today online six hundred.
What's that now?
Is Aaron here for something?
I don't know. Maybe just to talk to us, the public? Just.
There's nothing special.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Nothing special. All right, I'm gonna just.
Have we heard anything, Eric? If Carol is?
I haven't.
Okay, I'm gonna just hold for just a little bit, so. Bill, you good?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Hey, that's all right. No worries. I knew it. I knew.
Oh, that's your client.
Yes. It settled.
You don't have to just say. Yes, I do.
We're getting this to Carol.
All right, you ready? Okay, well, I'm gonna let Steve hang around a little bit. All right, you ready? It is six thirty-one in Reed Field. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three Reed Field Select Board meeting. Thank you for everyone joining us at home as well as here in person. We are, as I always do, I'd like to remind all of the select board to speak clearly and somewhat loudly into the microphone so everyone can hear you at home. Just to make sure it is all good. We begin tonight with our item twenty-three zero nine seven, which are the select board minutes from March thirteenth and twenty-second of twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended on one of them. I did. Oh, okay. On the public hearing meeting, it's Jessica Groton, not Gordon. And you didn't include her and Paula Clark in the attendees.
Okay.
That was it. Okay, so they're as amended.
Excellent.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the select board minutes of March thirteenth and twenty-second as amended. Are there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Are you abstaining, Steve? Because?
Oh, no, sorry.
Oh, just making sure. Okay, thank you, sir.
Here.
Right.
Wasn't here for one of them. So you were standing for absence.
But I didn't remember that.
So it's all. Yes, that's right. The universe has guided you very well.
You both.
That's it.
Don't do that.
I believe then we moved to item twenty-three zero ninety-eight, the warrants number thirty-seven and thirty-eight. I don't know. Is that also Carol? Is that you? Hey.
Go ahead. I'm trying to connect.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we might need to, you might need to do a new connection to the.
Yeah. Yes. Excellent. We can, we can just wait on that.
That's right.
Okay, very well then. What we'd like to do is now move on to, I guess, communications before we can come back to the warrants. And we want to take ten minutes for select board communications. We'd like to recognize, first have an item where we recognize the contributions of Will Harris to the town of Reed Field. Catherine, would you like to start?
Sure. If folks are not aware, Will Harris passed away a little over a week ago. He was involved in the town for many years, I believe, on the select board and the budget committee. I had the pleasure of working with Will when I first started here in town and he was thoughtful, fair, considered everyone's opinions and then had no problem making a decision and stating why he did so. I, just a tremendously kind man who always had the interests of other people at the forefront of his thinking and he'll be greatly missed.
I concur and I just wanna make sure that we send out thoughts to Bonnie, who I just spoke with this morning, and her, the entire family. So thank you very much and we appreciate it. We move now to our warrants. Carol, are you ready?
Sure.
All right, warrant thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Take it away.
Okay, warrant thirty-seven is eighty-six thousand nine hundred and seven dollars in a variety of expenses. One second. I know that there was Garel Palmer said was two sidewalk proposals. So was that prepayment or postpayment for something that's done?
That's interim payment for work that's ongoing.
Okay, is that the total or was that a partial?
That's just a progress payment for the, for the design work that we're, they're undertaking on our behalf.
That's us hoping that was a sign it was complete, but not, not so much.
No, I mean, we're still, we're still working on some final edits to, to propose documents that do show possibilities on both sides of Church Road. So we are working on final edits for that and we're able to start scheduling for the public meetings. I think those will be happening in the next couple of months. But again, we have to finalize things with the engineer, so.
Okay. And then the first one was capital improvement to the transfer station, equipment replacement. That was from Andersgagen Bank in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. What was the?
So that's a lease payment and it's, I can't say which one it's for because one's eight and one's eleven. But it's either for the JCB backhoe or for our compactor, our recycling or, excuse me, our, our new trash compactor.
Thank you. And then it was nice to see the age-friendly theater was like a hundred and seven dollars, which sounds really fun. And then one seventy-five for teen reading. So total library for like outreach payments or outreach methods, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. Books totaled five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Everything else was pretty unexciting. Um, books totaled five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Everything else was pretty unexciting. Um. And that was warrant thirty-seven, um, as far as the, um, variety of vendors go. Um, thirty-seven A was state fees in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Um, and thirty-seven B in state fees, two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-three cents. And warrant thirty-eight was payroll twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two and twenty cents. Um, the grand sum of these two warrants was one hundred and fifteen dollars, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to approve those warrants for a hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents.
It's been moved.
Second.
Second, uh, to accept the warrants as they are listed. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We continue to move through our agenda and we get to Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Departments. We picked that back up. In your packet, there was a, uh, listing, uh, minutes from our friends at the Age Friendly Committee and the Budget Committee from February eighth and February fifteenth, respectively. Are there any comments about those minutes? Just wanna say thank you very much to those committees for getting them out. Um, the last item for our communications is public communication. Members of the public may address the Select Board. We have some folks, uh, here i- in person. If you are online and would like to address the public, you may do so if you unmute, uh, or let us know otherwise. Um, if not online, then we'll take anyone in person. Aaron, is this you? Well, yeah, all right, you can go ahead, bud.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just say your name and, uh, speak clearly. That's all we.
That's right. You might not recognize me under the, uh, this lustrous beard that I have now.
Let's.
Aaron Neely, uh, owner proprietor of Moon Glow Canvas, and, um, well, the reason for I stopped by is just to, uh, uh, well, last time I was here is, I think, in August, and I'd come and asked about parking spaces and stuff and, uh, out in front of the shop and I guess, well, I guess downtown in general. Uh, but I saw that in October, there maybe was something passed around, uh, some parking sort of means and ways, or not means and ways, uh, just the roads, um, sort of ordinance.
Yep.
Uh, that involve parking, and it looked like some of the spots, you know, close to my store might be, uh, eliminated, so I just wanted to, I don't know, just sorry to take your guys' time. I was just curious what, what the situation is with the parking downtown.
And I think the last time you were here, we just mentioned that, uh, there is, there's hopefully going to be something down in front of the post office. Um, I believe I'm right, and, and not in front of your side, but Eric, do you?
Yes, so there's no changes to the existing parking spaces in front of Moongo group, um, excuse me, Moon Glow.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
So there's no changes in front of that building or the one across the way. Um, there are changes being considered, um, for the area in front of the post office where we sometimes have conflicting traffic flow.
Okay.
But noth- nothing affecting you, um, in, in any way, uh, with that direct adjacent parking.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I just, I know because it looked like that was like the wording of the ordinance that was in there, but no, I guess not, I know.
I think the biggest thing is, we, we talked about downtown, it's just safety stuff. It, it sometimes is a pain to pull out of there and not see, and so we want to eliminate the ones in front of the post office. I think mostly for accessibility and safety, and that's it.
Right, right, okay, okay, um. She saw it, okay, well, yeah.
Glad, glad you asked. It's originally, we get to answer a question, you know, sometimes we have.
For, you know, yeah, all right, thank you.
Not at all, no, thank you, all right.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Um, regarding the post office, is that already in the works at all?
I don't know how far along it is.
Yes, so, so we do have a complete design for that. Um, but, uh, we haven't issued an RFP for the work.
You have a what?
We have not issued a request for proposals for the work.
I have a question. I mentioned that to somebody the other day and they were like, what are you talking about? So it seems like we're having the, you know, Fairgrounds end of vote, we're talking about having Church Road on a vote on the, the ballot, I guess. Um, the post office, I see, impacts much, much more people than Church Road or the Fairgrounds. Meaning, um, seniors use those spots to shorten their walk. I, if we're gonna impact the parking spaces at the post office, wouldn't it make sense to ask for a vote from people on that? I know it was a proposal from a committee on senior safety.
Yeah, it was the Age Friendly Committee, which is interesting. Um, they recognized the safety issue there, but Catherine, did you wanna talk about that?
Well, no, but we discussed that multiple times that, um, that had been requested and worked on for two or three years, I think, before it was put up for, um, being addressed finally. And so that was the whole point, was to make the access, um, more accessible for the parking spot, um, on the side of the building. So when people get out of their cars, they'll be able to easily walk up. It's a dual ramp, right? It's like a switchback ramp.
Yeah, the, the design includes a ramp for ADA access up to the post office, um, on the front, not just on the back.
Currently, there's a weird step. It's like, it's not quite, there's like a weird step up on that side, right?
Right, and they, and they, the disabled or handicapped accessible spot is out back.
Yeah.
It's right next to the beginning of the, is it a ramp?
There's, on the backside as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It just seems like a, a proposal. Um, I mean, that's gonna impact our whole downtown and the, the ones across the street from that were eliminated. And it was so much easier when you're trying to get out of track, traffic instead of, if you're turning left from the post office, having to cross two lanes, you just look in your mirrors, anybody coming, you know, behind you, and you get out into that one lane, and, and I don't believe, uh, maybe there's discussion on that, but we're impacting the whole downtown area and a lot of people that use that. I, and I don't know if it's, that is more commonly used from seniors, but some are really shocked that they're, we're thinking of eliminating that, so it seems like that should, um, maybe have input from a whole lot of people.
Well, at least, we had input on that for a couple of years.
In what form? Like discussions?
What was discussed here? It was, I believe it was in the messenger.
It was discussed with the Age Friendly Committee, the road committee.
Meeting minutes.
We worked with main DOT, we worked with, um, the owners of the building. Um, so it has a broad base of, of, of import and support, and it really has been in the works for, for probably close to three years now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I'm seeing a lot of people that aren't aware of it. So, and the owners of the building, like the masons?
The masons were, were happy. I mean, they, they, they and DOT both see that as a pretty big safety issue because it impacts visibility. If you have a, a, a large SUV there, anybody pulling out of the actual road in between those two buildings, um, their sightline is limited, um, and there are pretty significant, uh, winter maintenance issues there as well. Um, by adding a piece of sidewalk there, we're gonna be able to maintain that better, provide safer and better access, uh, and, and minimize the, um, uh, the, the risk of, of an accident there. Uh, and we've already had a few, and certainly a few close calls. One of the other things that was mentioned is that that sidewalk can then, um, be used for, um, outdoor, um, activity space, um, to help bring people into the downtown. I know the art, um, gallery folks were pretty excited about the prospect of having someplace where, where they could have, um, maybe a small display or, um, something like that, whereas we can't do that right now. I know the Emporium and Moon Glow both have had signs out and little chairs and tables and things, so the idea is that it's an improvement to the downtown primarily for safety, but it has community effects as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great, we all said. Wonderful. We move now to, uh, points, uh, appointments, reappointments, and resignations. Luckily, we don't have any of those, but we move to item twenty-three zero ninety-nine, consider the appointment of Margaret Livingston to the Age Friendly Committee. Are you Mrs. Livingston?
Yes, I am.
All right, if you don't mind, you may, uh, go up to the podium, say your name, and, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay, um, my name is Margaret Livingston, and I live on Thorpe Shores Road, um, in Reed Field with my husband Lee. Um, I've been coming to Reed Field ever since, believe it or not, I was fifteen years old. Um, but only as a summer residence. In, um, two thousand and thirteen, my husband and I moved here permanently and, um, now can enjoy the community year-round. Um. I have, um, a good bit of history in the community that I lived in, in, uh, Connecticut. Um, I was, um, president and CEO of the, uh, community bank that spanned, um, hmm, seven towns, and, um, it was a billion-dollar bank. Um, so I knew everybody there. Coming here, not so much. But I'm getting to know people. Um, my husband and I joined the, uh, Blizzard Buster Snowmobile Club and quickly became quite involved there. And I now do, um, Mount Vernon Food Bank, uh, volunteer every Saturday, um, which has been, um, a great way to get to know the community. Um. Uh, let's see, what else do I, oh, I'm a Rotarian in the Winthrop Rotary Club. And, um, I just think Reed Field is a, um, a wonderful community. I'm, unfortunately, I didn't grow up year-round here, but we have so much to offer, um, spring, summer, winter, and fall, and mud season.
Yeah, even that one. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I'm hoping to be considered for the Age Friendly Community Committee.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do any members of the Select Board have any questions for Mrs. Livingston?
No, but just thank you for coming forward. It's always nice to have new faces and people that wanna be involved working.
I also think this is a great committee for Reed Field. Uh, I think a lot of, like, just like what we saw here, the Age Friendly Committee was a part of making those decisions, uh, like even in the downtown, make things safer, more accessible. So I think it's always a conversation that we all, uh, we need to have and, and, uh, it's a valuable committee, so thank you.
And I think I can only, um, I can not only add for an elderly community, I have lots of grandkids that come up and children that come up, so it's quite, um, everyone enjoys Reed Field, so.
Yeah.
And of course Heritage Days.
Yeah, that's it, yes.
And I, I thank you, um, for considering me for the committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Resume.
Yeah, yeah.
Pardon me?
Very impressive resume.
Perfect.
Glad to have.
Perfect.
I'll make a motion to appoint Margaret Livingston as an associate member for one year, beginning tonight and ending on six thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, appointment of Margaret Livingston to the Age Friendly Community Committee. Uh, is there any further discussion? Thank you very much. All in favor? Very well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do.
You gave a.
Then we won't forget.
Excellent. Our next appointment is, uh, absolutely, and, and Margaret, you do not have to stay. You're more than welcome. It gets, it doesn't get any more interesting, uh, I can tell you right now. Um, but, but certainly, you can certainly stick around if you like. We take no offense if you would like to leave, um, just know that, uh, we, you got it.
I'm wondering if you have someone that came on Zoom for public comment.
No, that's Jaren, and he's gonna be appointed in just a hot second, I think. Hi there. Uh, uh, item twenty-three, speaking of, item twenty-three one hundred is to consider the appointment of Jaren Shaw to the Enterprise Committee. Hello, Jaren, can you hear us okay?
Yep, yeah, it's just fun.
Sounds good. Um, we have your, uh, information here, uh, and if you just wanna tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanna be a part of this committee.
Uh, okay, so I'm Jaren John, looking for volunteer work, and, uh, thought that this might be a good place to provide some, some usefulness to the town.
Nice. Well, we appreciate it. Um, the Enterprise Committee, again, is a committee that, uh, is responsible for the Reed Field Enterprise Fund, uh, which is a fund of, uh, basically money for Reed Field-based small businesses. Um, and to help, uh, sort of have a, a somewhat of an incubator, a, a little bit of a, 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 just a, a money that is able to help for those, and the Enterprise Committee handles that. So Jaren, thank you very much for, uh, volunteering for this. Do any other members of the Select Board have any questions or concerns?
I do. Jaren, there were just a couple of items missing from your application. Can I get your address? I assume you're a Reed Field resident, but that wasn't on there.
I'm sorry, I thought I put it, one oh one Bell's Road.
In Reed Field, okay.
Yes.
A point of clarification on that, um, uh, Jaren did ask that, uh, his personal, personal information not be shared. Um, so we do have that available. We do have that.
That's probably why it's not there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And wait it out.
And then, um, just one other thing is you said you've been self-employed all your life. What kind of industry or what kind of, uh, work or whatever did you, have you been doing? You said you've been self-employed or had your own business. I'm just interested.
Yep, uh, so I was a sternman for a decade. Uh, I did computer repair for a decade. I taught martial arts for a decade. Uh, I could probably give you more things, but, uh, I've done a lot of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jaren Shaw to, I'm on the wrong page, sorry, to Reed Field Enterprise Committee uh, for a term beginning tonight, and, um, the date's not on here.
Twenty twenty-five.
Uh, six thirty, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I second that.
It moved and seconded to appoint Jaren Shaw to the Enterprise Committee for the term listed. Uh, is there any further discussion?
It's one thing, Dennis. I wanna say, Jaren, uh, yeah, ten years as a sternman, that's a heck of a run.
Yes.
That's not easy work, um, uh, but also Jaren is on the Conservation Commission and has made some great contributions there, so I'm really excited that he's, uh, branching out and trying some other, uh, activities in town, so thank you, Jaren, for that. I really appreciate it. I'm glad to work with you on another committee.
Great.
Thank you.
All in favor of appointing Jaren to the, uh, Enterprise Committee? Thank you very much, and thank you for your service, Jaren. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Jaren.
Thought I recognized his name.
That's right. We move on to old business. Uh, item twenty-three zero seventy-seven is to consider capital improvement items related to the budget and warrant information. You can find this information in your, um, packet, um, around page twenty-two, uh, as we get into, um, all of that information. Um, it's information about the bond bank, et cetera. Eric, I assume you will, uh, explain a little bit through these bullet points for us?
Yes, absolutely. So the first one is, um, the, um, a question around, if I remember correctly, on the fire truck. Um, and, uh, so the email that I included there was just a kind of a book. Consolidated discussion, really. Um, I wanna add, I did, uh, put some additional information up on the website, um, that, that helps round this out a little bit more. Uh, a couple of bond estimates, um, that I had performed, uh, and then also, um, a reserve account balance, so we can have a more full discussion. Basically, uh, we had borrowed money in twenty twenty-one for municipal projects that we have not been able to accomplish. We haven't had the results from the bidding that we had expected or desired. Uh, we, uh, had nobody submit bids for, uh, work to the library or the fire station, uh, fire suppression system. Um, and we've been talking about the purchase of a fire truck, um, and we've been talking about borrowing, we've been talking about, uh, being cost-conscious and doing things that are smart to help us save money. Uh, so all those things together, um, uh, led me to the, to the, I guess, realization, and, and with the help of Select Board and, and, um, Budget Committee members, that perhaps, uh, utilizing some of those funds now that we borrowed at a lower rate two, two or three years ago, um, would be better for us, uh, in the long term, uh, as opposed to, um, uh, borrowing at a higher percentage rate in order to, uh, pay more for, for a piece of equipment than we perhaps had to. So the, um, the recommendation that's coming forward, uh, is that we would utilize, um, a, a portion of those bonds from, from, from the last, um, issue, um, just the portion that were appropriated for the, um, or allocated, excuse me, for the, uh, fire station, sup- fire suppression system to offset the cost of the current proposed fire truck purchase. That would reduce the, um, the burden, um, immediately by a couple hundred thousand dollars. And would save about forty-five thousand dollars in interest over the ten years of, of the loan. That being said, we would still need to put something in the back of our mind and, and a placeholder that, um, perhaps when economic conditions and interest rates improve, we should be looking again at that fire suppression system. Um, so i- it's a bit of a, uh, of, of a transfer. It would require a little bit of extra, um, uh, thinking and, 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 uh, presentation to the, the public in, in the town meeting warrant. But I did discuss that proposal with both the main municipal bond bank who we borrowed from, uh, and our bond counsel, Barney, Bonnie Martin Nolich, uh, from, um, now Pretty Flaherty, uh, and neither had any concerns about our ability to utilize those funds for a legitimate public purpose, particularly if we, uh, had a, um, uh, a, a, a vote, basically an article on the warrant, requesting a transfer from that, uh, fire department building reserve, uh, to the, uh, fire truck, to be used for the fire truck. So, um, a few moving parts there, um, basically that the current situation or inability to really realize this construction. Um, we can talk more about the library at another point, but for right now, that's the key piece. Um, and then the borrowing costs that we're looking at, uh, and the, uh, the idea of, of reducing the, um, uh, the, the principal amount on that fire truck, uh, Uh the the principal amount on that fire truck uh that comes from borrowing. So. I'm happy to take any questions, or I I think it's important for you all to discuss this uh as well.
Sean, did you have a question?
No, just comments, really. I think we kind of, we talked, we have touched on this the last couple of weeks, I think, in a variety.
But uh. Budget meeting, it was not a hearing.
But it was discussed.
Carol and I had heard this then.
Yeah, and so I think what what I really appreciated from that was that we've you've continued to look and you've. Shown real figures, and I think, you know, I just think about when I'm doing my own finances. Uh the one that is twenty nine percent or whatever silly payment, that's the one I pay first, right? My zero percent, I'm not going to pay off as quick. Or I might use it so that I could lower those other opportunities. Um I just think this seems like very smart financial sense for us as a town, especially given. How how a lot of people are feeling, and I think um this will really outline things well for. Positive vote in terms of moving this forward because. Yeah, I think it really.
Oh, go ahead, Carol. Go ahead.
Um I think you said, Eric, that the fire station, they said the sprinkler system may not be necessary, but just for like a random overnight and not an extended stay, so that's good news. Um and the fire station money, that makes complete sense. I don't want to touch the library fund.
Either do I.
At all, and I I'll, I I don't know, I know several contractors. I don't know if they've know that this was going on. But I think a lot of people would like to see that happen is that's like the new. Community center, and also if we can get some computers in there for general use, it might help some of those people that aren't connected. So for. Lots of reasons, and I know the library. Um committee likes. Where their direction is going and headed, and so I think I'd like to put up. That aside and not touch that at all if we can help it.
Absolutely. So the the proposal does leave that fifty thousand that was allocated for that piece right alone. Uh that'll stay in its own its own area, and it won't be, uh basically, the bond proceeds came down after the town meeting vote, and they were partitioned into. The fire station and then the library, and so we'll maintain that separation. Um and the proposal is just for those uh. Fire station funds to be reallocated, and that's really what it is, is a reallocation.
Go ahead, Karen.
Did you want to say anything, Steve?
I just, I'm echo a chance. I just really pleased that um. You looked at that in that way and and did the research, and it just makes total sense. I really like, makes me happy.
I agree. Eric and I had talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and I'm very pleased that you followed through on it and did all the research. Um I just want to piggyback on what Carol was saying. Um. I think I think there are a lot of different things going on with why we're not getting. People to bid. Um but I think that Eric and I have talked about this some, and I think there's a very. Easy way to move forward, which is to break this up into different parts, and I think what you had told us, Eric, is that. Our maintenance crew will probably end up doing the entryway part once we are working on the paving and making that really handicapped accessible as a building. Um in a much better way than it is now. And so that can be done in-house. That will certainly save us a bunch of money. Um. Way back when we first started this project, I had found a couple of companies. That are not in sort of the greater metropolitan areas, you know, not in Lewiston Auburn, not in Augusta, but in the outlying communities um that do metalwork. And I think we can get the stairs for far less than I think the original estimate was twenty thousand dollars or something. It just a what I thought was a phenomenal number. Um. Way too high. So hopefully, we will find someone who would do it for us. Maybe it was thirty eight thousand. It was something really crazy in my mind.
Yeah, well, I I think that it's just. We're gonna, we're gonna struggle to 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 be less than that. I'll just, I'll put it that way at this point.
So I I think not having a general contractor is a good idea, and that we could possibly find someone who'd be willing to come in and do a room or to install a door. Rather than asking a contractor to. I mean, it's just not a big enough project, and so they're not going to bid on it. And if they are going to bid on it, they're going to make it worth their while, which means we're going to overpay. Uh so I'm I'm happy with that. I I think this is a great idea. Um my concern. Is what you have addressed. I think it needs to be very clear as a separate warrant article that we're taking this money from one account to another. So that people don't come back to us in five years and when we ask for the suppression system and say, but we already gave you money for that. Well, yes, you did, and then later we changed it here, you know, because it's hard to remember everything that goes on. It I I think when we make a motion, it would be good to uh, do we need a motion to do this, Eric?
Um no, I can I can take action on amending warrants.
To just agree now to put this in the capital improvement plan, say, at the five-year mark from now. The suppression system, so that it's actually there, and we won't forget about it, and it'll be planned, and even if we put in the same number of dollars now. Even if that isn't realistic, while we're looking at it in the next several years, then we can put in a more realistic figure. Um and it won't get forgotten.
Well, and and this is Sean, we also know that with, you know, municipality safety situations and. Uh different opportunities out there, there might be different funding in the next few years to cover that sort of system.
Or we may have a need come up where we're going to have staff there overnight regularly, and at that point, we'll have to, you know.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, look at it sooner.
Yeah, I think I I I echo what everyone said. I think it's fiscally smart. I think it's putting our money where our mouth is, literally, when we talk about trying to be. Responsible, we're doing it, so we're not just walking the walk. Uh we're talk, excuse me, talking the talk, so I like that. Uh the other thing I like is the fact that there's such an emphasis right now municipally on emergency services, EMTs, things like that, that I also agree that that. You know, i- i- it while it was frustrating that this sort of was omitted in the first place, and we all felt like we roll collectively rolled our eyes. It is, i- i- I guess it does turn out that that it helps in a different way, and and that's sort of the silver lining of it all, so. Um excellent. Thank you, Eric. If there's no more discussion. Then let's move on.
We do have other capital.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying. I want to move to uh the.
We had a situation come up that Dennis uh. Dennis and I were emailed about earlier, and Andy is here from. And we had said we would try to consider something that's not on the agenda at about seven, so.
Do that. If it's okay, if it's the pleasure of the board, what we'll do is we'll suspend uh the agenda for now, and we'll call up and talk about uh item twenty three one zero one. Uh so, welcome, Andy. Uh you can come on up here to the podium. Uh this is to consider a contract for a vegetation management.
This is, it's not actually on the agenda at all.
I am sorry.
Request from the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
That is due on the thirty first of March.
Okay, sorry.
So Andy, you can tell us about it, right?
Yeah.
I I yeah, I can.
Perfect.
Try, yeah.
Timing just happened.
Yeah, absolutely.
It this is a grant opportunity uh through the Maine Forest Service. To um obtain funds for invasive plant control plan for a property. And uh so where uh we thought at the uh Conservation Commission would be a great opportunity. Um probably the best candidate would be the town forest because we have ongoing tree harvesting going on there. And with tree harvesting comes invasive plants sometimes, and uh we we do have a little bit of an issue there. Uh in the areas that have been harvested in recent years and um. Uh commission members have gone out there and done a field day or two or three and tried to tackle these issues over the past few years, and it's it's more than we can really handle. So uh this is kind of a a first step in a two-step process where um. If if we get the grant. There's resource professionals that have been um trained to to create these invasive plant control plans. Um and I just afternoon was able to skewer our own two trees forestry, who's the town forester. They have a um a person on staff that is qualified to do this planning, so they agreed that they would be happy to do that. And uh if, again, if we get the the funding, so uh that would be step one if we're so lucky, and then step two is. We apply for the um money to do the actual treatments. So um it's just a one-page application. It's not a lot to it. I'll talk to Eric a little bit about, you know, completing. Bit of this, but then. Anyways, that's that's kind of the gist of it, and I can give you a rough idea. Um they they provided some estimates of what the plan would cost and what would. Be reimbursed for and. For the town forests, about a hundred acres, I believe, and um I think the estimate for that was, you know. A thousand dollars, maybe twelve hundred dollars, somewhere around there, and we'd get. If up to fifty percent reimbursed.
Great, so. Go ahead, uh.
So in layman, total layman's terms, what are they, what are they doing at the forest?
Uh tree harvesting is what has been happening in recent.
But like the grant, what what are we hiring professionals to do?
Yeah, it'd be one person with two trees forestry, David Asherman, um and he would. Basically walk the property and map invasive. Plants that he sees, you know, oftentimes they're in clusters, you know, there's a bunch over here, some over there, and he would provide uh treatment recommendations. And so that that would be the planning part of it, and um you know, that'd be presumably a report and all that sort of thing. Uh and then we would um apply for funds to actually do the treatment, the removal.
So what the grant is to pay for his proposal or the grant is to pay for the work to be done?
Pay for the plant to be produced.
So I think one of the things you have up there is invasive honeysuckle. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, there's others.
And there's others, and so.
Mainly shrubs.
So the idea is that we need to have, somebody needs to go up and make a a drawing. Of the property and list out what where the various plants are, what their types are, and then what we can use to actually eradicate them. Because there are some limitations on types of things you can do. Some things can only be cut. Other things can have chemicals applied to them, but like we can't put. Say roundup at the cemeteries, even if there's a big outbreak of poison ivy, because that's not a. It's a listed not to use chemical.
Yeah.
Uh so that's the reason for having a plan is so that people will know what's there and what the correct way is to handle these situations.
Exactly. Yeah, different invasive plants, the ones that come from outside the country and kind of displaced native plants. They respond differently to different control techniques. You know, some are very insidious, hard to get rid of, bittersweet, for example, others just pull them out of the ground.
So the town forest is used to harvest. Wood.
Yeah, correct.
I don't understand. Why we need an invasive plant plan. I honestly don't. I mean, to harvest the trees, we're going in with big. Machinery, I would suspect, and so I don't. What what impact are invasive plants having on our? Trees that we're trying to harvest.
Yeah.
I don't get the connection that warrants the expense of that.
A a couple of things happen. I mean, when you go in there in the forest that hasn't been disturbed in who knows how long. Fifty years, seventy-five years. Um you're creating, you know, you're serving the ground surface, you're cutting trees, you're dragging them out. And it's creating a perfect bed for invasive plants if there happens to be a population outside of the town forest. To spread into the town forest, and once they do that. Um invasive plants by nature tend to displace native plants. And so as far as the Conservation Commission is concerned, ideally, we want to conserve our conservation properties. Um in that, you know, native plant form. Uh we don't want to have invasives running amok all over the. Property. That's that's not a healthy ecosystem.
But that's the forest. That's what.
Well.
I don't, I don't get it. So I can see if if it's a place where people go to. And it's being overtaken and our maintenance of a trail or something is impacted. Where we want to invite people to go and enjoy themselves, and it's open space that we use. And that is like for people's safety or something, but that's the nature of the forest. That's that's mother nature. I don't. Anyway.
Well, it is, a town forest is used for recreation. People walk there, they birdwatch, they they hunt there, they do various things.
So they're all risk.
Yes, yes, and 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 certainly um. For an ecologist, seeing a woodland infested with invasive plants is not a pretty sight. We're trying, we're trying to minimize that to the extent possible.
Excellent.
I'd like to make a motion to um. Have the Conservation Commission work with the town manager to submit this grant proposal for an invasive plant. Control plant at the town farm forest, not. I have, I'm going to finish this. Are you folks paying for part of this? I mean, is the match for this coming out of conservation funds?
Yeah, yeah, we.
Okay, with the match, with the match for the grant coming from the Conservation Committee funding funds.
Thank you for mentioning that, Catherine. I was going to uh make that point, because this is something, it's it's, I guess, as far as policy goes, it's consistent policy. Because they have set aside uh invasive management funds for the last several years in the Conservation Commission budget, so. I don't want people to think it's a new thing or a surprise. Uh it's something that they already do. This just helps them do it a little bit better and a little bit less expense to the town.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded to uh uh. Move forward with this uh application. Is there any further discussion? Excellent. All in favor? Excellent. All opposed? Good. Carol opposed? Make sure we move that. Uh excellent. Uh thank you so much for coming in. We appreciate it. We're going to get back to our bullet points under old business. Thank you, Andy. Uh item twenty three zero seven seven, we've talked about the fire truck bonding and reserve usage. We now talk a little bit about capital investment warrant articles and then discussion of a joint budget committee and select board policy workshop. Eric, do you want to take number two?
Yeah, uh very quickly, this really is just an open item um around discussion, um because I I I um. I like to have some guidance on where I'm headed with things, uh and I and I've received a lot, um but there seemed to be some disagreement over. Approach to capital planning articles in the warrant. Uh we've had feedback from the Budget Committee, we've had feedback from the Select Board, we've had feedback from members of the public uh regarding this. Uh and so I had just wanted to uh bring it, bring it around for some resolution, so um that we can have a um. When we meet again on April tenth, we can have a final town meeting warrant that is um uh cohesive.
And just as a point of clarification, on April tenth is when the Select Board will go through the warrant. Um discuss it, break it down, and talk about our recommendations. Is that correct?
Your your recommendations for the final articles or any final edits, um uh because we we basically, uh after after that date have. Really um just a couple of days to get everything into the printer. Um so that they can begin the process of of creating the warrant, so we can have the um the the printed materials back in time for absentee voting. Which is thirty days ahead of the actual vote. So uh it seems like we've got, we're a world away from from June thirteenth, but we're not, uh we're we're very close, so. So that's the reason.
Just a point, after we make our. Vote on the warrant, our recommendations for up or no, up or down, then the Budget Committee makes theirs, correct?
Yes.
So it, we can't go like up to the night before because the Budget Committee still has to have time to meet.
Yep.
Because they won't know the final warrant language until we do our process.
There are two days later.
Yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, I I just wanted to to kind of bring back to last week's meeting again, just one more point of just, I want to repeat it for clarity. You know, just when there was questions about visions in the comp plan. And what that meant to capital improvement and what that meant overall to the budget, and you know, there was, it was a great comment by someone that was here saying. I want all those things. I just don't want to pay for them, you know, which. Amen, right? Um but and then I think we clarified it, but yes, we do all want those things, and that doesn't mean we're going to do those things. But having it in the comp plan gives us an opportunity to see if there's anything ever that could come of those things. Um so yes. I just wanted to make sure that. You might like all those things, but not want to pay for them, so that was great.
Excellent.
So I I think kind of where we're at, if I'm, so you can correct me if I'm not understanding correctly, Eric, is that we had. Um. Some of us were discussing breaking things down, pulling out one thing or two things, or pulling out everything capital into each. On a separate line. Um there was discussion about just leaving it the way we've been doing it for the last almost ten years. Um the Budget Committee weighed in. With a, well, one person on the Budget Committee weighed in with a proposal to do that, do it based on um perceived need. Um you know, like if it's a requirement or it was to meet some legal. Situation like ADA accessibility, for instance. Um and then you had given us a proposal at our last meeting, I believe, of doing it based on a dollar amount. And is that basically kind of where our conversation has been?
Yes.
Okay, and so tonight. Are we looking to settle that or just to realize that we have these differing? Approaches to how we might handle this?
That's up to you all.
Ah, yeah. Um well, I like the idea. I I I certainly like the idea of having some kind of. Uh you know, clear reasoning behind it, so that the document, the guy. Uh, you know, clear reasoning behind it, so that the document, the guiding document, I think that we talked about was. Uh, you know, like fifty thousand dollars, whatever that threshold is, I think perceived need, things, needs, wants are all subjective. And we could debate that for hours on end, um, but I think if you attach it to a, 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 an amount seems good. What I would like to do is I'd like to have, so, I, I, I don't think we can solve this for this particular warrant. But what I would like to do is underneath here where it says, talk about the budget committee and select board policy workshop. That's when I think we can have this discussion. Is if we get the budget committee together with the select board in order to kind of hash this out together, because we do work so closely on the budget that way. It seems like it would be best to, to work this out together, so that if we are heading into the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget process. We can have that guiding documented place.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, that part I thought sounded great, and I just think of it as part of our retreat or like a retreat two point O. You know, like it's an extension of that, that this, that we join together with a budget committee to go, okay, this is what just passed, this is where, this is where our board's at. With whoever's on our board and what do we think we're looking at for next year, and so that's, I, I'd like to see us maybe move to that model, just as that. That gives everybody that precursor, just chat.
Steve?
Well, but. Was there any, I, you know, I, I did miss some budget committee meetings and stuff like that, was there any? This further discussion about this particular warrant this year?
Nothing new.
Nothing new.
Nothing, same, same issues.
But we, we do need to try to resolve that tonight, then.
Mm-hmm, thank you, I would like to get it resolved tonight, then.
Great, then, uh, we can certainly, and, and by resolved is whether or not we're breaking out things or not, absolutely. I think that's pretty simple.
Yep, um, I just want to go backwards one little baby step, um, to what Sean was saying and Dennis, I think that's a great idea to have a joint meeting. Um, I would move that, I don't, I don't want to move, I would suggest that we do this in early July. Um, before the budget committee really goes away.
Yeah.
In, until like December, when they start their work up again, um. But we could, we could use that opportunity, as Sean mentioned, to look at, at what we proposed and what got voted in. And, um, use those as the clear messages for this is, you know. What we succeeded with, this is what we didn't succeed with. Um, and then try and figure out something, um, I, I just think that's a great idea. It, there's a lot of varied opinions and, and personalities that I think would bring a lot to the discussion.
Yeah, and I, I guess for me too, I don't want it to be a thing of, we succeeded and we didn't, there are things on there that I might not vote for, right? That, that the town might, and that's totally different for me too, so, I think.
Absolutely, what you want, and it's different, yeah. Um, so do we want to, do we, the, is this the discussion where we want to talk about whether or not we're gonna split out anything? It seems like we've had that, we can certainly do a motion, um, and see if it's a supported idea, uh, if that's what you want to do. Um, and sort of go from there.
Um, I, I will make a motion then, please, that, um, we split out. Capital improvements, I think just a, a heading of guile hall or sidewalk or. Equipment is, people don't know what they're. Voting for, and it's an all or nothing, and some of these are very large, um, and some of them are very subjective. And some of them, um. I just, I think things got slipped in this way last year, and I think there's time to address it before the warrant is finalized. Um, and I would like to see, I don't know if all of them, um, fire department is very self-explanatory and it has its own bond. Um, but I don't know what some of these are for, I think we've talked about them, transfer station sixty thousand. Again, I think most people would support what's at the transfer station, but what exactly is the improvement there?
So, so do you wanna, can you just make your motion one more time, nice and clear?
Yes, I would like to split out the capital improvement warrant into individual items.
So that's your motion, your motion is to select split those, is there, i- is there a second? Hearing none, that motion fails.
Okay, then let me make another, um, motion to split out open space out of the big capital improvement. Thing into its own budget.
It's been moved to split out open space, uh, is there a second? Hearing none, that motion is ended. Thank you, anything else?
Nope, thank you.
You got it, all right, we, uh, basically want to sum this up by talking about whether or not we want to have this budget committee. And select board policy workshop, is that something we need to move, or, or Eric?
Uh, I think tha- that one, I think it would be great to have a motion on, because it does give, um, some, some clear direction.
Bit of a guidance.
And then the budget committee, I think would appreciate it, but, um, I do. Meeting, right, who appreciates one more meeting?
Do we usually meet once or twice in July?
Usually just once.
Ah, then I'll make a motion. To have a joint budget and s- budget committee and select board workshop. To discuss the budget and policy around capital. Investment warrant articles. In our second meeting in July, whether that's the beginning one or the second one, I don't care.
Yeah, it's everyone it is.
Do we have a date?
I don't think yet.
I thought it was in here, no?
No, we usually don't go, go past.
The last one, June fifth.
Sometime in July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it would either, it's probably the second or fourth. Mondays, it'll be one of them.
So nineteen, it'll be the third and seventeen, I believe.
Anybody have a second, July third?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I can tell you, I won't be here, I'll be at a concert, concert with, um, Plant Elephant Kraus, so.
The, it's, it, that's where it falls.
Well, I didn't say Monday, I said second meeting.
Yeah.
I, I think squeezing a second meeting in July doesn't work. That's all I'm concerned about, and I understand you're saying it, can they not?
Can we do a joint thing where we, they, we can maybe have the first hour of the meeting be. The workshop and then the second hour be our select board meeting?
That, that's a better idea.
I, I, absolutely, I'm down. Definitely, we can get us in the same room. Yeah, no, no, that's right, so probably this, let's say, I, I'm shooting for the seventeenth, probably.
I'll make a motion to have a joint budget committee and select board. Policy workshop for capital investment war- warrant article discussion. At the beginning of our July meeting.
I like that, it's been moved second and seconded, uh, to, uh, have the, uh, a joint budget committee and select board meeting. Uh, at our July meeting, is there any further discussion? Excellent, all in favor? Thank you very much, um, thank you very much for that, I appreciate that, I think it's a good idea, uh, moving forward.
It might be a good idea for us to figure out what. Meeting date that's going to be.
You want to do that right now?
We're gonna ask the budget committee, I think it would probably be. And you're telling us that we've got an issue.
July fifth is the, is the meeting, and then we vote on the thirteenth, is that right, the second Tuesday?
We, we vote on, uh, Ju- June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, June thirteenth is when we, so June fifth is our meeting before the thirteenth. Then we would be scheduled, uh, I have on here, uh, June twentieth. As a select board meeting.
July or June?
I'm looking at June.
Dennis backed up a month.
Yeah, I'm looking at.
To see where we were.
Right, just to sort of, that way we can lead in and see, so we're.
Oh, because it was Juneteenth, that's why we went to the twentieth.
Yeah, the twentieth is our, uh, June meeting, and then that would put our next. That would put our next regular select board meeting two weeks at the third, that's terrible. Uh, so we can either do the tenth or the seventeenth for our July meeting.
Let's do the tenth.
The tenth or seventeenth of July.
I'm out of the country for both those dates.
Hi.
How about the twenty-fourth?
Seventeenth.
Yeah.
Seventeenth, too?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth?
I'm home.
Is that too late to do all that?
Well, why can't we do it on June twentieth, I know, I know, we just went by all this, but if, if we've already got the budget voting done.
Sure.
Absolutely.
It could be fresh and it would give you more room. Yeah.
Is a holiday.
And that's usually a light meeting after the election, eh, eh, we don't bring really heavy stuff, um, so I think that would be a good idea.
Very well, if that's the, if that's the case, then I'll need a new motion, uh, because we mentioned our July meeting.
I did look at my calendar and still.
Hey, you have nothing to apologize for, this is, this is the procedures of.
Motion that we already voted on?
No, it's already in the, um.
Okay, I'll make a motion to re. Uh, peel the prior motion and with everything except the date, so. On our second June meeting, which would be the twentieth.
Sounds like a great date.
It's been moved to amend the, uh, meeting, the joint meeting to the twentieth of June, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, then in that case, it's been moved and seconded, is there any more discussion? About having our joint budget committee select board meeting on the twentieth of June for our meeting? Right, all in favor? Thank you very much, wonderful.
Not even an extra meeting.
Oh, I love it when a plan comes together, now, we move to new business. Item twenty-three one zero one, uh, is consider a contract for vegetation management on Church Road. We have ten minutes assigned for this, and you can find information about this, uh, on page twenty-seven. Uh, or twenty-six and twenty-seven, I should say, um, of your packet. Um, we want to talk a little bit about this, Eric, and maybe, uh, give us some background.
Yeah, sure, so if you remember, um, last fall, we put out an RFP for, uh, paving. Shoulder and vegetation management work as one cohesive unit. Um, and we got a lot of interest on the, on the paving and shoulder work and the ditching work. Um, but we didn't get really, uh, uh, any consistency around the vegetation management piece, we selected. Um, uh, Pike Industries as the prefer, preferred contractor. They did the, the ditching and culvert work this fall, they're planning to do the paving this spring. Um, and they were working to find a contractor to do the brush and vegetation management on our behalf. Um, we talked, uh, back and forth a bit, they asked for some local recommendations, um, and they did reach out to Stevenson Solutions to. Um, get a price from them, um, or from, 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 from him, I guess, uh, and his crew, uh, and, um. But as it turned out, uh, Taylor, um, reached out to us directly, uh, and Pike, uh, was, was, um. I, I talked with them today actually about that, confirming that they were okay, I just wanted to make sure that if. Um, because when we contract directly with a service provider, uh, i- it saves us a little bit of money. Um, but they're losing a little piece of their contract, but they were okay with that. Um, and so they, um, would, would rather than the hassle of managing another vendor. Um, for something that they don't traditionally do, um, they, they said, fine, go ahead, you know, y- you can contract directly with Taylor. And so, uh, he had put forward two different proposals, one for, um, a less, um, complete. Uh, vegetation management job and one for a more complete management job that included the use of a, um. A, a, a chain flail, um, uh, brush grinder, which is a very effective. Uh, and cost-effective and efficient means of, of cutting brush down, you see it on, sometimes on the interstate, they did it on Route seventeen here. Uh, when they took care of the understory there, um, this is something that we had as part of the original RFP, getting this work done. Uh, we did budget for it, we do have funds for this work, um, and the recommendation that I have, uh, is that, A, we, um. Send out a letter to everybody in, uh, uh, on Church Road. Uh, we have a draft here in the packet, so people can know what work is being done and when, and they can contact us in advance if they have any questions or concerns. Um, but then that we, when we do proceed with this work, uh, that we go with the more, um, involved, uh. Uh, proposal, which is a couple thousand dollars more, but I believe, um, uh, will give us a better quality. Uh, and, and longer lasting result, so, uh, that's the, uh, the summary, and, um, yeah.
I just want to point out on this letter, please, for the sake of clarity, can you just don't space it?
Oh, gotcha.
I know it seems like such a thing, but it's like.
And it needs a date when it gets sent.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I rea- it probably doesn't have a date, because it's not being sent, so, that's fine.
Not yet.
I, I like the idea of the more comprehensive proposal, and I think using that equipment. Would be really to our benefit. Uh, eh, according to the, uh, proposal, it will do a much more thorough job.
Yes, and, and.
The whole point is to keep that vegetation away from the road, so that we have proper drainage, so it protects the pavement that we're investing a lot of money in.
So, but we're doing the vegetation on both sides?
Yes. And we're going twelve feet from the edge of the road and sixteen feet high.
And the sidewalk was gonna start when?
Twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. And, um.
This is for paving?
Yes, yeah, I just like, are we doing that, and then we're gonna put in a sidewalk on one side or the other? I just was trying to figure out the timing between the two, and then the egress, like. From the town, from the center line, what's the egress going into people's properties?
Uh, it's four rod, which I believe is forty-nine and a half feet, so that's. Yeah, um, you split that into twenty. Uh, seven, yeah, tw- basically twenty-five feet from the center line, um.
Same, again?
Twenty, twenty-five feet from the center line of the road typically, although Church Road is offset a little bit. The Church Road is actually fairly easy, the rock walls that run along both sides of the road are effectively the, the, the right-of-way. Um, we're not going fully into the right-of-way, we're just going twelve feet off. Um, and, uh, in some cases, we'll be going back a little bit further to get some saplings and things, but, um. Those have, I believe, been, been, uh, partially flagged already.
And for frame of reference, how wide is a lane in the road?
Uh, ten, uh, Church Road's about eleven feet.
Okay.
Okay, so twelve. Feet into someone's property with the brush. Is it a normal distance?
Not their property.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Their property stuff.
Um, so, uh, roads are interesting, um, if, if the town owns the road. Um, which usually only happens if it's a county road from eighteen or seventeen something, um, then we actually own the road. With almost all of our other roads, we have a right-of-way, which gives us a maintenance option. Not necessarily maintenance responsibility, technically, the homeowners would own somewhere close to the central line. But we have a responsibility and an obligation and, and, and the right, right-of-way. To clear vegetation back to the edge of that right-of-way, uh, and we, we try to keep it. Uh, you know, as far back as we can, because as Catherine said, having that extra light, that extra airflow helps. Keep our roads safe and navigable and, and, and reduces maintenance costs. So going back, uh, ten or twelve feet from the road edge is actually fair, fairly common, especially when you consider that the ditch oftentimes is five or six feet. Um, eh, after the shoulder, so by, you have the shoulder, you've got a couple extra feet, so you're eight, eight, eight feet anyway. Uh, and so you can clear back, uh, so it is a common, a common distance.
Okay, that's what I was trying to see.
Yeah, and we're not gonna be, um, I, I was joking with somebody today that they better, um, cut their lilacs down before we get to them, but. Um, that was a terrible thing to say, uh, but, but because this is, this is not, it's not true. We, we, we are very respectful of ornamental shrubs, unless they're blocking visibility or things like that. And then we talked to the Omaha homeowner, uh, we had to take out shrubs at the corner of, um, Rat Mill Hill and. Um, and, and, um, Plains Road, uh, and we were, we worked with the property owner, we helped with some, um, some mitigation there. Um, so we, we definitely understand that, uh, people appreciate their trees, sometimes they spend money for them. Uh, and the, the guy, idea here isn't to, to get to that stuff, it really is the brush that's growing up in the ditch. The limbs that are overhanging and hitting, uh, trucks as they go by, that type of stuff.
Okay, I was just trying to get out ahead of those people that were like, you're on my property type of thing, and I like the fact you're giving them till mid-April. And so this hasn't gone out yet.
Not yet, no, I wanted to make sure we had approval first.
Gotcha.
Excellent, shall we make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the Stevenson Solutions estimate. Totalling eleven thousand dollars to. Uh, be executed by the town manager and also authorized Matt to send out the letter with the accommodations noted already.
All right, second, it's been moved and seconded to accept the first Stevenson solution. Offer with includes the chipping and grinding of the brush for eleven thousand dollars on Church Road, is there any further discussion?
And so just the difference in the price, they get the same thing done in lesser time? Or a better job done, it sounded like you were.
Better job done, so imagine trying to go down through with a chainsaw or loppers or one of those little disky things that you.
Okay.
Um, and, and that doesn't.
Yeah, that was good.
The disky thing that you. Saw, there we go, yeah.
We're talking about a big machine that's been.
Yeah, and more complete.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
It's, it's quite a sight to behold, if you haven't seen it before, but it's this grinding thing in like a tree, you're just, yeah, you know what I mean, the tree that's like. Uh, very well, um, it's been moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion, all in favor? Very well, now, before we move on, I want to just, uh, we've approved that and I get it. But I wondered if there has to be a component about our purchasing.
We have, um, you know, that's a, that's a good point, um. Yeah, I would say that it would be good to suspend that purchasing policy, just an abundance of caution, we are basically working as an. You know, on behalf of the, the contractor Pike Industries, but, uh, because we'd already approved that, but it's the best practice, right?
So, so, so what I mean by that is this, even though the, eh, there's a circuitous way that, that we've approved it and that's good. I would like to have a motion to suspend the, the purchasing policy, which we ray, which you remember is. A policy which says, um, uh, the town manager can, uh, approve certain purchases up to an amount. And I think we just raised it up.
Without.
Without having to have three other proposals. Without having to have three other proposals. So that's what I'm saying. I think it would be best practice to make sure that we have this vote for the sake of the clerical and, and going back over things. So again, I just want to say that we are going to entertain a motion to suspend the purchasing policy so that we can, uh, simply just go with this, uh, this Stevenson solution. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, what's the limit on the purchasing?
So the, um, the, um, uh, expediency threshold, uh, is seventy-five hundred. The quote has threshold is seventy-five hundred to, uh, twelve-five. Uh, and so this falls in that range of, um, uh, ideally, we would be getting three quotes. Um, but, um, we were working with Pike and they gave us effectively.
I mean, we're really, it's really already been approved through the proposal by Pike. So we're just, anyway.
It's sort of like. It is a redundancy. It, it is not a redundancy. It is just a clerical issue.
I'll make a motion to suspend our purchasing policy that requires three proposals for this estimate of brush clearing under the Pike contract.
It's been moved.
Second.
And second it to, uh, suspend the purchasing policy in order to, uh, effectively, uh, manage this, uh, contract through Pike. Is there any further discussion? Excellent. All in favor? Good, and thanks very much. I appreciate it. It just makes my.
No, I, I'd forgotten. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, but we move now to item twenty-three one oh two. Consider the format and focus of the informational mailer slash explanation document for the June thirteenth vote. This is the, uh, mailer, uh, that will go out and see, um, a little bit of the explanation of things that we will be doing for, um, the warrant. Eric, do you have information about this?
Yes, so, um, uh, we've talked about the, the public education piece of this and how important it is, and we've recognized that and, and, um, actively tried to increase every year how we, um, communicate with the public. Uh, over the last several years, we have sent out every year, uh, an explanation document that includes all of the warrant articles uh, and a brief explanation of, of what some of those pieces are. Uh, a bit more information about what's being proposed, a bit more information about where the funds are coming from, if there are offsetting revenues, uh, which is going to be very important with the fire block this year, I think, to consider, uh, that. Uh, but it's important with all of those things that we explain because without town meeting, we're left in a bit of a vacuum. Um, we have Zoom recordings of our meetings that, that get like twenty watches a year. Um, we have, um, you know, our mailings, our messenger, um, that give budget summaries and things like that. We have our budget committee meetings and we have our select board meetings. Uh, but, but our reach isn't really where, where we'd like it to be, um, and, and we're not alone in that. Uh, so one of the things that we've always done, uh, uh, in the, in recent history anyway, is to send out this mailer explaining things. I guess really it started after town meeting, uh, was abolished.
I think it started with the secret ballot.
Yeah, so, so, so it's been part and parcel of that governance model that we're working under. Uh, it's been more or less the same, um, for the last several years. Uh, it's a, it's a bifold, um, it's fairly plain, uh, and Dennis had the suggestion that we might want to look at ways to make that more attractive, maybe add color uh, to it. Um, there's a little bit of an expense to that, but, uh, it, it might be, it might be worth it. I don't know. Um, just a proposal anyway, but, uh, and that's for you guys to talk about. I'm just, I'm just, um, bringing up the point. Um, uh, other options include perhaps changing the format or, um, you know, any number of things, adding a supplemental one-page mailer like what we did for the, um, the public, um, the, the comprehensive plan. Um, so we could look at maybe adding in that outreach effort, um, and having, uh, you know, a, a, a brochure effectively uh, in addition to the mailer, but, um, that was the idea that we would talk about how to do that better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I.
Um, and last point is we have, uh, seventeen hundred left in that publications account. Um, we have per just already, um, some additional card stock for one more mailer. Um, because you guys really liked that, um, so I went ahead and ordered some additional card stock, which is several, you know, two or three hundred dollars worth of paper. Um, but it gives us the ability to print in-house and do a mailing. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there that we have a little bit of materials at hand, uh, and we certainly have enough to do a, 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 a robust mailer for the explanation document as well. Yeah.
Did, I think at some point we did a newsprint explanation thing. I don't know if anyone remembers getting that.
I know the school does that, yeah.
As you said, it's not like, it's like a mag, it's like a, like a, like a little advertisement.
Right, and I'm wondering if that might be a better format. Um, the paper's certainly cheaper. Um, I don't know about the printing costs and, uh, you can certainly lay it out in a more appealing way. So it's not just a, a long list of words, just lots and lots and lots of sentences, which is what we really end up with. Um, I think when you can put things kind of like we do with our, our messenger, when things are kind of in boxes and they have like titles and there occasionally there are graphics near things, um. I, I think that appeals to people a lot more. We get a lot of people who read the messenger, certainly.
I can tell you that in, in fact, part of why I, I think this is, I, I, I've mentioned this, so I, I, I have no, I just want to say a little bit about it, is I often think about Carol, when you talk about, you know, folks not knowing what, what they're voting on. Um, and, and I think, you know, it's just a, to me, it's an effort that if we can make this explanation, uh, you know, clearer, uh, if we need to, to just basically update the format in order for folks to know exactly what they're voting on, so it's crystal clear and we don't ever have to have any doubt uh, about, you know, whether or not they understand things going on. I certainly, you know, I, I'm down for, for making that as clear as possible and having that explanation. So that's where this came, Carol.
I think our job is to get the information out there, get the facts out there, make it as crystal and transparent as possible. The people that are gonna read it are gonna read it. The people that are gonna really pore over it, no matter how pretty it is, is, are either gonna totally ignore it or really pour through it step by step. And my reason for splitting it out is so it is crystal clear what people are voting on, and we're not really doing that. So we can put lipstick on it or make it shiny or make it um, colorful, but I think our job is to simply get the information out there, make it as plain speaking as possible, make it as cost-effective as possible. We're just giving them a preamble to the vote so they don't get in and have to take twenty minutes to fill out their thing. They've already poured over it. They've already talked to people if they have questions or concerns. They already go, when they go into the, uh, fill out the ballot, they know what they're gonna vote on and how. Um, so I think we just simply do our job cost-effectively and get the facts out there.
I, I absolutely agree, and, and if that's, if we just want to follow the same thing, I, I, I have no problem with that.
I've said my piece. I'd rather see it look more like the messenger.
Yeah, I hear you.
I, I think making it um, more appealing to people is the name of the game. It's how everything works in marketing, in in education, in business, advertising, so.
And I agree, there's gonna be copies of the warrant available online, um, and, and things like that. Um, I would find maybe a happy medium and, and if it's not, even if it's not, you know, I guess what I'm saying, like graphically designed, you know, at least have some kind of, um, you, you know, some, something that helps just follow along, uh, and, and make sure, because I think it is our responsibility to make sure that it's clear, like Carol said. Make sure it's crystal clear what they're voting on. I, I don't ever want people to feel like they don't know what they're voting for. And so I think these sorts of outreach and this sort of thing, we're having our meetings, we'll have another budget, we'll have a thing on Facebook, there's gonna be a mailer. You know, I, I just, if we're gonna do it, I'd like to do it to the best of our ability, um, and make sure that it's worth it. Um, but yeah, I, I, as, as long as we can be clear, that's the best part.
But we're not trying to get them to buy anything. We're just trying to inform them.
Absolutely right.
Pretty simple.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I think the buy-in piece is that when it comes in your mail, whether that's at the post office or in your home, the first thing you do is look at it and go, Town of Reedfield, recycle. Town of Reedfield and this been community advertiser, this been AARP magazine, this been, you know, people just do that automatically with things that come in the mail. They see things and they're just like. Um, and so I think it's, it's good to have things that make it recognizable.
So, well, I think with this one too, right, we've got comp plan, which is not a small piece of information either, and I think from some, some of the confusion over, um, why warrants are written the way they are, why why things are in what category and stuff, I think. Or why there's a town meeting in general, that's done by secret ballot. I wonder if, you know, just making sure all that's kind of clear at the beginning as part of this process, just because of the well, mess around other parts, and I just don't want anybody to be confused, and I don't actually know what it needs to look like, so, um, I am of the person that won't read it, uh, in a piece of paper. I will read it online because that's who I am, but I am paperless in my life, because, yeah, that's who I am, but I, I still think that's not the majority of the residents of this town, so, um.
Well, and that's, whatever it is, we should put it on as a PDF.
Yeah.
So they.
Accessible.
Which we've always done. An accessible PDF that you can zoom in on.
Well, and anyone who's voting absentee at home, I, I know there are a lot of people who do that because they can sit with the explanation document and their ballot, which you cannot do in the voting booth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so that, that, you know, making it anyway.
Yeah.
I also think if we make it colorful at all, it's like, okay, why is this one bold and red and that one? Maybe they thought they wanted to sell this one. I don't know. I, I, if it's colorful.
Well, you could just. That's a question's bold, and you could make the explanations not bold.
Yeah.
And for a higher cost, for what purpose?
Well, I guess, I guess I'm, you know, my thing is, I'm willing to spend a little more money if the clarity of what people is voting on, which we've talked about quite a bit. If the clarity of what people are voting on can be aided or in some way elevated with some clever graphic designing, which is smarter than what I could do. I would be willing to do that so that I can say in my heart, we, there should be no feeling of any part of our warrant article or our vote that is surprising or that people don't understand because we've taken, uh, you know, our steps. At the end of the day, I can say, we did everything we could to make it very clear, and if people still didn't read it, that's their choice. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. You know what I mean? It's something we've talked about ad nauseam about the fact that w- will people know what they're voting for, and I certainly think they will, but I, but, but I want to leave no doubt, I guess, is what I'm saying, so.
And I'm still not happy with the way it's laid out, so like I said.
Well, that's, you know, I guess.
So, uh, you know, we're trying to be clear, but we're trying not to be clear, so I, I, we're kind of beaten to death.
I disagree with that. Crystal clear.
We're being crystal clear.
Right there. If people don't want to vote for the capital item, because, because something in it is not appealing to them, then they'll vote no.
So are any, every one of these capital improvement things in the explanation going to say the library for this purchase, the transfer station for this purpose, blah, blah, blah?
They, they could, yeah, I mean, usually.
They always have.
Well, it, well, not, not always. I guess what I'll say is.
They, they need to be, is what I'm asking.
Sometimes, uh, we talk about the fact that this is for reserve. Um, reserve is oftentimes for unanticipated expenditures, so that not everything has a specific allocation. Um, and I think that what we can do and should do in addition to, to adding wherever we can these explanations, uh, i- is a discussion about the capital improvement plan because everything that's in that, um, uh, in those articles is effectively carried forward from the comprehensive, uh, excuse me, from the capital, and don't, don't, don't quote me on that one, uh, from the capital investment plan that we have. So I think that having a little bit different format and maybe some explanation about how things work and the fact that we do have a, a, a capital investment plan, um, and that these things are, are, are referenced there, and here's a link to it.
Yeah.
I think that that type of discussion could be very helpful. Um, but, but, yeah, I mean, wherever there's question, we try to put in some explanation. So I think that we can make an extra focus on the capital aspect of that. Uh, and, and really, there's no reason with those eight or ten items that we shouldn't be able to put in a sentence about each one.
Absolutely.
So.
And it, it could be more than one sentence. I know, I think some of the documents in the past, they've been really pretty brief. Um, and so, I, if it's another double-sided page longer to make better explanations, I'm good with that.
I would also appreciate maybe QR codes for all the nonprofits that we vote for.
A few what?
It's a great idea.
QR code for every nonprofit or line item that we vote for, so.
On the PDF.
Uh, or in the mailer, so that, you know, if you want to learn why are we donating twelve hundred and fifty dollars to X.
Yeah, sexual assault crisis, you could scan it and you.
And it goes to a website and we go, oh, yeah, I kind of like that, and I, I would support those people.
I'm a big fan of the QR.
But that would need to be a much clearer quality because QR codes.
Need to be clear.
And will one of you help Eric with those?
Oh, I can get it.
Oh, come on, he doesn't need no QR help. So I would like to. Lost. I would entertain a motion. We would accept. Do we need to have a motion here, Eric, or do we have a consensus in general about?
Nice sloppy.
Yeah, we know we want clarity, we want it to be cost-effective, but we want to make sure that we leave no doubt.
Yeah, so that's it. I think, and I like the QR stuff. I think that I'll, I'll be able to work with Angelica and, and, and Kristen, who who do put a lot of time into, into our communication side of things to, to work this forward. Uh, what I'll probably do is ask, um, the, the nonprofits themselves to give me their, their very own QR.
I love that.
Uh, and then if I don't get those, then I'll find them. I can, I can figure that out, but, yeah, um.
Sounds good.
This is good. This is positive, and I think it will help make it a better process.
And we'll put that on Facebook. I'll have that on Facebook as Susan out, so that's excellent.
Um, let's. We're not double spacing that, right?
Typically not.
Thank you.
Um, item twenty-three one oh three is to consider a liquor license for Lilac Catering and Anum Cara LLC. You can find this in your packet on page thirty. Um, the, um, uh, it looks like a wedding on nine sixteen Main Street in Reedfield. Um, looks like a, a home wedding, doing a little bit of that, uh, inside, uh, this private home, um.
I think it's Cave Camp KV, right? That's nine sixteen Main Street.
Is it?
I think it is.
Is it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, it's around, oh, on the other side. I Googled Earthed it earlier and it was like, I was on the other side, so it's the, it's the, it's the camp is nine sixteen.
Well, in any case.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Anyway, yes, at the end of August and it's going to be indoor and it's for, um, eleven hours. It ended a reasonable time. They filled in all of the boxes. Yep. Um, and I, there, there's no dancing.
No, I know, right? I love that that's part of.
I don't think it's gonna infringe on any of the neighbors, so I would make a motion to approve the liquor. The catering permit liquor application as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second to approve the, uh, application for catering permit for Lilac Catering, uh, for August, the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, at nine sixteen Main Street in Reedfield. Is, oh, Eric, go ahead.
Just, well, one other piece of Catherine, before you finish your motion, if you could add that, um, that we would also be suspending the provision for a public hearing, which we do have, oh, you, you know, um, on occasion for new business-type applications for like an enterprise or like for the, um, the weather vane, for example, or somebody that has a standing liquor license. Uh, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's, that's required for this, but I wanted to just make sure, again, abundance of caution, um, that, that we are not, um, giving an expectation that, that we would have a pub, a, a, a hearing on this when we, we typically don't.
My motion meant to include and waive any public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the amended, yes, that, yes, does that still do your second, Carol?
Yeah.
Would you still second it? Okay, excellent. Uh, so, uh, to, yeah, so, uh, to waive the public hearing and approve this, uh, catering permit, any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
And we don't need to sign that, Eric.
Yeah, yes, I want to pass that along. We also some FYI.
I was gonna say, we're so close, Eric, being right in time. Yeah, I'm giddy, absolutely giddy. The assessors meeting is, uh, April tenth, so that's our next, uh, meeting of the assessors. Uh, Steve and, um, Carol, that'll be us downstairs, probably at six o'clock. Um, just have that marinating in your brain.
Indiana.
Oh boy, uh, do you want to zoom me or do you, you can miss, you can certainly miss.
Assessors?
We can certainly zoom assessors, yeah, absolutely, because we meet down there, but if it's, if, if you can't make it, I don't, more important stuff, right? More important stuff.
I'll see you guys at, well, if I'm gonna be there at six-thirty, I can be there at six.
Okay.
That's fine.
Um, it'll, it'll be interesting, I promise.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting. We're gonna be just past the, uh, deadline for, uh, the, um, uh, end of the, uh, effective tax year, so April first is our deadline for getting all of our tax forms in and all that stuff, so, uh, it'll be interesting.
It'll be a lot of info. Um, and FYI, other, other FYI item?
I have.
Oh, uh, uh, Carol, look, yeah.
I have one which was just, um, for the public as well as, uh, for we five, six, seven people in the room. Um, there was a very interesting article in the Kennebec papers about school budgets yesterday, maybe, or just today, um. All around the state, people are dealing with the same thing. All around the state, people are dealing with the same thing, and it's just what we talked about in our last meeting, that uh school districts got so much money. I think they said the state of Maine got, or we spent more on education during the pandemic. It was triple a annual budget. That of government spending nationwide, the amount that was infused into the education system. And so all of these districts have been spending that money and using it for things, and now it's ending and they don't have it. Um and. Most of them are realizing that they're not gonna be able to keep all the things that they started during the pandemic. Um and there will need to be cuts. And it it seems that other places around the state are in the six, seven percent increase range. Um and so I think, I think people in Reedfield need to be aware of that and need to be asking the school district, you know. What can they do? And are these things really things that we need to continue or not? And you know, can we really afford to spend for them? And of course, that's very, I'm not saying one way or the other. What's the right thing to do, but it is a statewide, nationwide problem with schools right now. So and of course, they have their own cost increase like we do, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, something that we talked about at that budget, that meeting with the the select board or the school board is. You know, you keep hearing about, you know, unprecedented things happening and things are so different now and stuff like that. And and. You know, I, when I hear that, immediately when I hear about, you know, unprecedented issues that we're facing, I I start to, then my mind immediately goes. Well, then what unprecedented solutions can we come up with? Um that that that, you know, might, that that. You know, it's trying the same old thing might not be working. Um and and certainly when we talk about um twenty-one percent of the school budget. Is maintenance and upkeep of buildings, um which I think is something that is an amazing figure. The increase is twenty-one percent. So um things like that, you know, we we live in unprecedented times. And so sometimes you have to have some unprecedented thoughts about how we we move forward. So I I I certainly agree with that.
Thing that's troubling is, I think student performance is, is not improved with the whole lot of spending. In fact, that's that's probably struggling. Um so maybe get back to some basics.
No, I wouldn't entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. It's been moved. Back in it uh to adjourn all in favor. Thank you very much. We're out. How about that?
And we added an item in the middle.
I know. Uh we're amazing. This is.